Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county administrator/controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, administrator/controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives. So we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
His children are a little more. Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Finance and Physical Resources Committee meeting. Today's date is Tuesday, December 1st, 2015. The time is 8:30 a.m. We'll begin today's meeting with public comment. Is there any public comment? I see none, so we will move to Agenda Item Number Two, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Commissioner Jones? Is there support?
Support.
By Commissioner Morgan? Are there questions or comments on the consent adjustment? Vice Chair Hennessy?
The Health Department item? I'd like to know more how that's going to work in terms of, you know, health.
You want to remove that?
So are you asking to remove that?
Yes, I would.
Okay, we'll remove Item C from the consent agenda. Any other comments or questions or items to be removed? I see none, so we'll proceed with a vote on the Items A, B, D, and E. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We then will address Item Number Two, C. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Commissioner Voorhees? Is there support? By Commissioner Vander Mullen? Okay. Now, any questions on this item?
This is Two C. I think this sounds like a really innovative way to put fresh food into food pantries, but I'd like to know a little bit more on how they're planning to do this. And if we didn't bring this out in discussion now, I'm not sure that it would really be highlighted. So that's really my intent of taking it off the consent agenda is to highlight what this is that's going on.
Good morning, and thank you for the question. This is an award that we received from the state of Michigan in support of our four-by-four program plan, with the focus of trying to get fresh and nutritious foods into our food pantries. If you visit them, you know that they're fantastic at having lots of boxed and canned foods, dry goods, but getting good nutritious, healthy varieties of fruits and vegetables has been challenged for them. This is a project modeled after other communities, which is a community-supported agriculture, where we actually buy shares of produce from local farmers, Kent County farmers, who will then, over the course of the summer, be delivering fresh produce to the participating pantries. So we think it's a really great way to get fresh food in those pantries and to support our local farmers as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Adam Wondon, our administrative health officer. Is there any other questions for Adam on this item, or in general? I see none, so we will call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We then move to Agenda Item Number Three, which is an action request, which will be explained by Darrell.
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve the addition of one circuit court judge, two circuit court clerks, one assistant prosecuting attorney, and two corrections officers effective January 1, 2017. Every two years, the State Court Administrator's Office is required to evaluate the judicial resources and make recommendations regarding the number of judgeships that are required. 2013, the office recommended an additional judgeship for the 17th Circuit Court and 63rd District Court. The county's Judicial Resources Subcommittee at that time did not recommend the additional judgeships, but stated that the issue should be reevaluated in 2015. In August of 2015, Board Chair Kornike appointed a Judicial Resources Subcommittee consisting of Commissioners Vander Mullen, Bolter, Bukowski, Morgan, and Saulfeld to evaluate the county's judicial resources following the SCAO's 2015 report. The Subcommittee is recommending that the county approve the addition of a circuit court judge, as well as two circuit court clerks, two corrections officers, one assistant prosecuting attorney, and the reclassification of an existing clerk to clerk three in the prosecutor's office. Although the state provides for the judge's salary, the employer's share of FICA, travel allowance, and retirement, the county is required to provide workers' compensation and health and life insurance. In addition, the county will also have to fund any ancillary staff that's required, as well as provide for the facility needs for the new judgeship. The Subcommittee has also recommended that the county begin the build-out of the remaining two courtrooms and judicial suites of the courthouse. Subcommittee also recommended that the county begin the build-out of the county, or, excuse me, Subcommittee also recommended that recognizing the build-out will require approximately 21 months from approval to completion, the Subcommittee should enter into short-term lease with the city of Grand Rapids to use vacant courtroom and judicial suite on the seventh floor until completion of construction. This item was recommended for approval by the Legislative and Human Resources Committee at its last meeting.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt? By Commissioner Vander Mullen? Is there support?
Support.
By Commissioner Mast? Are there questions or comments? Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Yeah, just that we realize what a very expensive move this is. I take it it's better than a $3 million cost to do. And then, just to kind of get things ready for it, and then, so that's the one thing that shocked me, is just the total dollar cost for that, and then the long-term commitment that goes with it. And then, I see that we have two correction officers in this additional personnel. Wouldn't that go through the sheriff's budget and that? So I guess that's my question, just one, is that the people, the public, and you and I all know the kind of costs that we're talking about. But the other is that last one there, where $210,000 for correction officers, for two officers. It seemed high, but also that, wouldn't that go right through the regular sheriff's budget?
Well, it does go through the sheriff's budget, which is the general fund budget. It is for two security officers in the courtroom, courthouse.
Oh, for?
For the courthouse.
For the courthouse, not for the correction?
Not for the correctional facility.
Thank you.
And you are correct that this is not an inexpensive proposition. Our judicial line item in our budget, as you know, is the second largest after public safety, so it continues to be an item that is always a good portion of our budget. I thought maybe Commissioner Vander Mullen might want to speak a little bit. He did head up the committee with Commissioners Bolter, Bukowski, Morgan, and myself that looked at these items, took comments from our prosecutor, from our sheriff, from our judges. It came to the recommendation. Do you want to say a few words?
Well, yeah, the need was there. We recognize that. We recognize, of course, that there's associated costs with it. We didn't have any specific recommendations for where that money should come from. The Finance Committee and the administration are going to have to deal with that. And you're absolutely right, Darrell, that it's, there's some significant costs. So there, we may have to do some juggling, you know, to make it all work. But at the end of the day, there really wasn't an option to not do it. The other part of the proposal, or, this is an actionable thing that we're talking about today, but the other, there was a district court judge that was also on the table, that was approved by the state. We chose not to do that. But then, if you look on the report, which is attached, there's a couple of items that we talked about that we'd like to have taken care of, dealing with the district courts. One has to do with the mental health stuff, and then, perhaps the reallocation of some assets within the county to take the, some of the burden off in the 63rd District Court. I think some 40, 43% of the population ends up going to the 63rd District Court, and the other, oh, I don't remember many districts, I don't remember the number, but there's quite a few have the other portion. So how can we redistribute some of that activity to other places? It's going to require some legislative changes, perhaps, for sure some cooperation between the other district courts. And we're hopeful that the Legislative Committee, in the next term, next year, takes that, those two items and begins working on that, because that could, that could make some significant changes in, number one, how much money we get, and, number two, how much staff we need or don't need.
Thank you, Commissioner Vander Mullen. And to that last point, I think, too, we are trying to find some efficiencies in this. It turns out that there are 12 district court judges in the county of Kent, but they are designated by area, by geographical area. Two of those district court judges represent 43% of the county's population, so you can see there's an imbalance. It's at that particular courthouse where the additional need existed. Our position is one that has to be brought to the state to say, hey, look, if you can take those 12 judges and allow there to be interaction in cases between those judges, judges and courthouses within the county, you could really make this a much more efficient process, where not only for Kent County, but all 83 counties of the state, you don't have to necessarily have, you know, the district courts can run more efficiently. So hopefully, we can move on that with the legislators. We did raise that at our last legislative breakfast with them. Back to the circuit court, though, which is where our recommendation is. You know, this is an area, just to give some background, too, that has been an area in need. There's definitely, as Commissioner Vander Mullen noted, some, the statistics show, when compared to other parts of the state, benchmarking data, that, you know, the county has a higher, much higher level of volume for the amount of judges that we have. And so hopefully, this will address that for the long term. We're taking steps to address that in the long term as well, with the build-out. And I think our recommendation as a committee was a good one. So any other, yeah, Commissioner Vander Mullen?
I want to just add a point, and thank Roger for reminding me, but if you look on the back sheet, on Page Four, on the bottom box, it talks about prosecuting attorney. And this is what makes Kent County what it is, from my estimation, is the prosecutor's officer, Bill Forsythe, came and said, instead of, he could have easily come and said, we need two prosecuting attorneys to deal with this one judge. But instead, he says, we can get by with one if we can reclassify one clerk's position. Well, if you look at the reclassification, what that costs, some $3,300 bucks, and look at the number on top of that, which is 104, this whole deal could have easily been another $100,000, $100,000, without that kind of cooperation. So I think we need to show some appreciation for that kind of way we manage things. And it's not only Forsythe, all of our staff does that, so, just a little note.
Yes. Point well taken. So Commissioner Mast?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I want to, you know, the first paragraph under, makes the following recommendations. When I read through this earlier, it jumped out at me, and I just want some clarification, I guess. The second sentence in there says, "The Subcommittee noted that the recent and projected growth in psychiatric inpatient facilities in the county was contributing to significant increase in probate court case load." I'm not aware there's an increase or projected growth in psychiatric inpatient facilities. Did we mean projected growth in psychiatric cases, mental cases? Or probably somebody could explain that to me a little bit.
I think it actually, we'll have Mary Swanson speak to that, but I think it actually is both. I know that pine res is increasing facilities. And the issue here is that if you have an out-of-county person that is, uses the hospital facilities in the county of Kent, the case then originates in the county of Kent. So in essence, because our, the hospitals for the region are located here in Kent County, Kent County is getting a disproportionate share of these types of cases. And my recollection is that those cases have really exploded to the number of well over 1,000 more or so a year than what it used to be just a few years back. So why don't you add some additional detail on that?
There's really nothing to add. You said it very succinctly. They're not, though I will clarify, we're not adding new facilities, but the facilities we have are adding beds and are expanding. And so that, coupled with the efforts that we've tried to make, to make sure that those cases are handled timely, there is a lot of activity and mental commitments in the community, and that's really what's driving a lot of the probate court's caseload.
Well, okay. I mean, I know there is an increase in psychiatric inpatient involuntary cases, because I've heard that from some of the judges, and they're spending more time at some of the psychiatric hospitals. So, you know, it's, this goes right in line with our, with our goal that we gave to our executive director of the Community of Mental Health, Network 180, is to begin to develop and work with the community a mental health court. This is probably just a possibility, this particular judge could become the mental health court judge. That's usually the barrier, is finding a judge that's willing to do that. So we'll, I'm fully in support of this, but I think because of that reason.
And just for clarification, based on what the feedback we got from the judges, the position would involve a new position that would be in that area?
Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thanks, Mrs. Chair. I'd just like to make a comment. Most of this committee was zeroed in on the cost, and it was something we had to get our arms around. We had a good interaction with the judges, and I have to tell you, even Commissioner Bukowski had this thing on lock. And so it's something that we didn't pass out of committee lightly. We, I think we did a lot of due diligence. I think the judges proved to us that there's a need, and so that's why it's before us today.
Commissioner Paulman?
Is there a sense of ongoing maintenance of the new space, like what the cost would be on an ongoing basis?
For, at the courthouse?
Just for maintenance of the space over a decade, or?
You know, I could look at El Geno, but frankly, the courthouse has its own facilities management, its own budget. I don't think the operational expense of the additional courtrooms and two suites is going to be significant at all with what we already have over there. I should point out, just from a collaborative standpoint, that as mentioned in here, it'll take a while to get that built out, especially because we'll need to be working around the court cases that are going on. And we have reached an agreement with the city of Grand Rapids that we will be bringing back to both boards early next year, that we will be leasing back some of the space from them that they use right now. So that'll be an operational expense for about a year, a year and a half. That'll be additional, but I think that's a good collaborative arrangement that we have to allow for the planning and the build-out to take place timely.
Thank you. Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, just a brief comment, following up on Commissioner Voorhees's note of how expensive this is. Whatever it's worth, I was the only one who was on the 2013 committee to look at this. I don't know what I did to the chair, but it must have been something to be reappointed. But that being said, it took us two years to get over the sticker shock. Unfortunately, Habitat for Humanity can't do the build-out for us, so we've got to pay retail as opposed to some volunteers and their painting. So, and, yeah, it's, and kind of a theme throughout a number of our items today is, you know, we are adding cost to our future budgets. And this still is 13 months away, but it's a half million dollars more to the 17 budget. Odd infinitum. So definitely was well-considered and needing to serve our folks. And it's already been pointed out, those two very critical recommendations for Legislative Committee looking at the consolidated jurisdiction of the district courts, because if somebody from Byron Township has to go to the district court, they can drive by Granville, Wyoming, and Grand Rapids District Courts on their way to Grand Rapids Township.
And Kentwood?
And, well, you have to go out of your way to go to Kentwood. I'm just looking.
Everybody goes out of their way.
So that being said, you could drive by Kentwood, too, if you really tried, but those who fly by the crow, you're not. So that being said, and then also the cost of the mental health involuntary commitment, that the sending county should be paying for some of that as opposed to us, to find out what the equity is in that. So, yeah, it's a tough choice, but a real choice.
And I guess the good news is the county is growing, which is, these are the types of issues you face when that happens. The inverse of that, I'd rather have this than the inverse of that, so, which most of the rest of the counties have had recently. Any other questions or comments? I see none, just as a quick matter of process, so this will then next go to the Board of Commission as a whole, assuming we approve it, and then it would be in place. It would be, the position itself, the new judge would begin in January of 2017, therefore be elected in the 2016 elections. That'd be a new position. So with that, we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We next move to Agenda Item Number Four, which is an action request by the Administrator's Office.
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve Amendment Number Three to the 911 call-taking agreement with the Kent County Dispatch Authority. In March of 2010, the county entered into an agreement with the Kent County Dispatch Authority and the city of Grand Rapids to consolidate the emergency 911 call-taking services from five to two call centers. These two call centers are currently located at the Grand Rapids Police Department and the Kent County Sheriff's Department. The agreement stipulates the service, the services that are to be provided and the distribution formula for payment to the two call centers. In 2012, the parties approved Amendment One to simplify the distribution of the $2.5 million allocated by the Kent County Dispatch Authority. In 2015, the parties approved Amendment Number Two to extend the agreement six months to December 31, 2015. This was done to coordinate the term of the agreement to the dispatch authority's calendar fiscal year so that it could better predict costs for its budgets. The dispatch authority has requested approval of Amendment Number Three to extend the agreement 12 months to December 31, 2016. The amendment has been reviewed and approved as deformed by corporate counsel.
So moved. Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Mast. Is there support?
Support.
By Vice Chair Hennessy? Are there questions or comments? I see none, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to Agenda Item Number Five, which is an action request on behalf of the Aeronautics Board.
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve a lease and asset transfer agreement, an assignment and assumption agreement, and an intergovernmental services agreement between the county and the Gerald Air Ford International Airport Authority, and to authorize the board chair to sign all documents necessary to effectuate the agreements in a final form approved by corporate counsel. In September of 2014, the Board of Commissioners approved in concept the recommendation of an airport governance steering committee, the recommendation of an airport governance steering committee, that governance of the airport be transferred to an authority with regional representation. On August 27, 2015, the Board of Commissioners adopted articles of incorporation for the Gerald Air Ford International Airport Authority, and the authority was officially established by the state of Michigan on September 2. On November 25, the Authority Board authorized submitting three agreements to the county for approval. These agreements must be included as part of the authority's federal aviation administration application to transfer the airport's operating certificate from the county to the authority. These include a lease and asset transfer agreement, an assignment and assumption agreement, and an intergovernmental services agreement. The agreements have been reviewed and approved as deformed by corporate counsel.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Voorhees? Is there support?
Support.
By Commissioner Vander Mullen? Questions or comments? Commissioner Bukowski?
Yeah, to dive in to say that, have no doubt that the authority will do well with all the assets and liabilities that we will transfer to them. That bullet point that we throw in there often where it says that corporate counsel has reviewed and approved as deformed, I guess you're comfortable that this protects us in everything? I mean, at the end of the day, we still own it, and if something were to go terribly unexpected, it all comes back to us. So, I mean, that's, and so we have enough oversight and authority to watch that, correct?
Overall, correct. We had a meeting with FAA yesterday, and you have to be able to let go of the reins enough that the authority can turn around and govern itself. And so there were issues as part of some discussion with FAA about the authority having that ability to do that without the county turning around and having to grant permission for everything. We went through probably about a half a dozen modifications to the agreements that are in front of you, none of which would I would consider to be overly substantive, but basically trying to address concerns FAA had about the non-delegation issue, about diversion of airport revenue. And for them, it got down to issues, as we had a stated consideration for the agreement of $40, a dollar a year for a 40-year term. They had a problem with that diverting airport revenue. So we are revising that $40 figure down to $1.
Don't you know how much fun it is dealing with the FAA sometimes?
Yeah, so we're out of $39 right now. So, I mean, it's, yeah, yeah. But again, I think that all of those changes, none of which, you know, would be overly substantive, still feel like the county has the ability to turn around and protect the interests of the residents and customers of the airport. You still appoint the board. You have the ability to remove board members for cause. If things really went south, you have the ability to turn around and terminate the agreement. There's a three-year provision for doing that for convenience, just to allow for smooth transition, but you always have the ability to dissolve the authority as well, so.
All right.
That's the long answer to your short question.
All right, so, so cool. Following up on the loss of $39, though, in more seriousness, then the question of what gets left behind under the third agreement when it comes to that intergovernmental service agreement, even though the funding says, there's no funding required to make this happen, what, what's going to be left behind, holes in our budget where, you know, is the airport today funding X number of positions, and in a year and a half to three years from now, the airport will be doing it on their own? I mean, the airport has showed they're going to save money doing that, and that will be their, all their right to do that. How are we going to fund those positions? You know, again, how much revenue will we lose in this? Or is it not?
It's, from a general fund perspective, it's revenue neutral because we do not support the airport at all.
No, I know from general fund, however, from the airport revenue now, that gets paid into...
Oh, oh, you're talking about the cost allocation?
Yeah, that.
Okay, okay. Or the internal services.
Yes. So that revenue funds positions in this building and elsewhere that won't.
I can get it, well, we can get into a lot of that. We will lose some revenue, but we are entering into a certain, an agreement to provide certain services to the airport over an interim basis so that we can transition all of that.
Okay. So in the course of that 18 months to three years, we'll be doing our own transitioning of reducing capacity since we won't have that customer anymore?
Well, we will, we will look at that because I have to look at, we have to look at what the capacity currently is with our staff and what this will, how this will impact. Okay. All right, thank you.
Commissioner Vandermaal?
Thank you. You know, Darrow's, Darrow's correct, and, you know, there is going to be some impact on the general fund, on that cost allocation thing that we're just going to have to deal with. And we've had to deal with it with the library, with the mental health, with the, now with the zoo. This is, this is going to be another one. So I suspect that someplace down the road, we're going to have less people here than we had before. And how that all washes out, I, you know, it's going to be...
Just one other, other point to address on that is the cost allocation system lags by two years. So you have this agreement for services that may run 18 months to three years, and then you still have that two-year lag. So you really have a longer period of time to turn around and address that capacity issue and right-size your organization.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Morgan?
Yeah, I was going to bring up the lag on the cost allocation. I asked some of the airport staff if I should speak to this, this resolution before, so they said, no, not really. So I guess I'm not going to say too much. But I would like to ask a question about, how long was the conversation with the FAA yesterday and a lot of minor changes?
Yeah, we were on the phone for between an hour, hour and a half with them yesterday. And like I said, it, most of the changes would not be something that I would, I would be concerned about raising with you as substantive. We referenced things like the OMB circular A87 for the cost allocation system. Well, they want to change that to the Code of Federal Regulation site, which is 2 CFR Part 200. They're citing the same regulations. So, again, not a problem with those issues. They wanted to turn around and clarify that it's also a transfer of airport sponsorship, not just the operating certificate. So we added some language to the agreements to clarify that. But really, not much substantive in terms of their changes, and I think that just goes to show that we were well-prepared for that in preparing the documents, and we had a good agreement worked out with the authority before it even went to FAA.
Thank you. Vice Chair Hennessy?
Following up on Commissioner Bolkowski's question, as we have taken, you know, through the, through the years, have had various reductions in our workforce, what are the implications for, you know, healthcare costs having this, you know, is it better to have a smaller or larger work group, or our pension and its costs and distribution of costs? So how are we projecting this to influence our healthcare and our pension in the future?
I will say, as to the pension, since I serve on that board, it is something that has been on the radar and they are working with county and, you know, there will be a transfer out of a certain number of employees due to that. But, you know, so, right now, the pension is, fund is doing very well. I don't think that'll have any, as I understand, material impact where we're over 100% funded, which is always a good thing. But as to the other issues, maybe you wanted to speak to that?
Generally, the cost of healthcare has increased at a greater rate than the tax base of the county. So the fact that you are going to be transferring some employees will mean you're going to be transferring that liability to the authority. So the county won't have to absorb that additional extra cost for healthcare that exceeds what our growth rate is. With respect to the pension, even though we are overfunded at this point in time, we're transferring a portion of those assets to cover the employees that are being transferred, there is a risk with respect to how the market performs. And you're transferring that risk as to how the market performs to the authority for all the employees that are transferred. So even though you're fully funded today, that exposure of being able to be obligated to make the payments and the risk of market performance is being transferred, so again, the county has less risk.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to follow up the Commissioner Hennessy's question, we're still considered a large group, even if we move the airport off, so it's not going to diminish our leverage as far as negotiating with, I think that was part of Commissioner Hennessy's question.
But, yeah, we've had cumulative over the years.
We're going to move from 1,700 employees, give or take, to 1,600 employees, give or take.
So we're still a large.
We're still a large organization, correct.
Okay, any other questions? Commissioner Coleman?
Just one quick question, Tom. The only provision that struck me as I didn't understand its presence was 5-1, prohibition on waste. What is that in there for?
Basically, that, what the intent of the waste provision in there is to obligate the authority to maintain property in good condition. It doesn't mean that they cannot have plans to demolish or replace properties, but it means it has to be maintained in good condition.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any other questions, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to agenda item number six, which is an action request by the Circuit Court.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to set the juror compensation rate as $18 for a half-day on the first day of summons, and that juror travel reimbursement continue to be reimbursed at the rate of 10 cents per mile for round-trip travel between the resident and the courthouse.
10 cents per mile.
State law required that as of October 1, 2003, jurors are to be compensated at a rate determined by the Board of Commissioners of not less than $25 for a full day and $12.50 for a half-day on the first day of summons, and $40 per day, per full day, and $20 per half-day for each subsequent day, and that jurors do reimburse 10 cents, not less than 10 cents per mile. Since 1998, the county has paid jurors at a rate of $35 for a full day and $17.50 for a half-day for the first day, but adopted the statutory minimum rate for subsequent days in 2003. Beginning in January of 2016, the 17th Circuit Court will implement a new jury management system, which improves communication to summon jurors and provides for a more streamlined and user-friendly process. Among the benefits of this system is the opportunity for jurors to receive their compensation from a kiosk at the courthouse on the day of service. The system, however, will not accommodate payments of less than a whole-dollar amount. In addition to changing the daily rate to a whole number, the new system will require mileage payments be rounded up to the next dollar. Following a review of comparable counties, the chief circuit court judge, in consultation with the bench, is recommending that effective January 1, 2016, the rates for the first day be changed to $18 for a half-day and on the first day of summons. All other rates will remain the same. Jurors for the district courts are compensated at the same rate as jurors for the circuit court. The circuit court administrator has communicated the proposed rate and the rationale for the changes to the district court administrators within the county.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Commissioner Mast? Is there support?
Support.
By Commissioner Coleman? Questions or comments? Commissioner Coleman?
It seemed to me that this system, it sounds like a great idea, and would actually have a offsetting cost reduction in terms of postage and handling of sending out those payments? Is that the case, and if so, is the $4,000 actually overstated?
I'm going to refer that one to either, to Andy Tholamru, who is the Circuit Court administrator.
Good morning, Andy.
Good morning.
Did you hear the question?
I did. Yeah, and the answer to your question is yes, that will happen. I just want to say right now, and for everyone watching, is that, yeah, the plan is to have these cash kiosks for people to leave that day. We're still working with the vendor to make that happen, so that's not a reality yet, but we're expecting it to be very soon. There's a lot of other manual processes that our staff does that will, that will not have to be done manually anymore with this new system as well. So there's quite a bit of cost savings with the actual system, aside from just postage, so.
Great. Commissioner Vandermaal?
Thank you. I, I get it, but when I, when I look at the mileage at 10 cents a mile, I'm saying we're pretty cheap. I mean, we know what it costs to operate a vehicle, and to say that we're going to pay somebody 10 cents a mile, the cost is probably 56, 50, 60 cents a mile. We can save money, but we can be cheap, and I think we're being cheap with this.
Saying we're cheap.
Okay, we're cheap. I got it.
If everybody didn't drive by Kentwood courthouse on the way in, I'd think of the money they'd save. Just saying.
Any other questions? Is that a question?
No, I'm just throwing my hands up.
All right.
What's the matter, son?
Thank you, Andy. We'll call the question then. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number seven, which is an action request on behalf of Facilities Management.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to approve an extension of a lease agreement with the Arbor Circle Corporation for property located at 1101 Ball Avenue in Grand Rapids. In December of 1965, the county approved a 50-year lease with the Guidance, Child Guidance Clinic for property located at 1115 Ball Avenue, which is adjacent to the Juvenile Detention Center. In 1996, Child Guidance Clinic and several organizations merged to become the Arbor Circle Corporation, which currently occupies the property as a lessee. The original lease is set to expire January 3 of 2016. Arbor Circle has requested to extend the lease as it continues with its planning to vacate the property. The proposed agreement will extend the lease term to December 31 of 2021 unless terminated earlier and allows for up to two additional one-year extensions if requested by Arbor Circle. All of the terms of the original lease remain the same. The lease extension agreement has been reviewed and approved as deformed by corporate counsel.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Commissioner Mast? Is there support?
Support.
By Vice Chair Hennessy? Questions or comments?
I just, I just express a lot of appreciation to this because Arbor Circle is providing a very good service to their county, and this is a way to continue to help them do that with a, with a minimal amount of cost.
Okay.
So thank you very much, county.
Very good. Vice Chair Hennessy?
This has several references, you know, to their vacating the property or other, other plans and that type of thing. Does that leave us in a, in a position of having lots of questions that perhaps are uncomfortable for us in terms of planning? We're looking at space planning. Does this, you know, where does this leave us, and is it an uncomfortable position for us?
For, for the foreseeable future, for the next three to five years, it doesn't put us in an uncomfortable position. We would like to eventually retain ownership of that, or retain occupancy of that property to, to allow us to look at our future plans, but in the immediate future, it doesn't.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
Can we spend just a minute talking about the extension date and the language? It says the lease is extended for an additional period to and through December 31, 2021, unless terminated earlier. So does that mean that at any given time, we can terminate, or can they terminate? And then what's the point of making it 2021 if that's the case?
The, the agreement is basically, at Arbor Circle's request, they are investigating building new facilities as this property becomes functionally obsolete. They're not in a position to have that construction done at this point in time, but they're anticipating that they'll be working on that and doing fundraising for that. They've acquired additional properties, and so this allows for them to get out sooner if able. Okay? It does not turn around and provide any additional rights to terminate that aren't in the original leasing.
And we don't have any need or plans for that space up until that point? I mean, at one point, you decided 2021 is, is an acceptable timeframe?
Correct. That, that was a negotiated number in terms of allowing them sufficient time to turn around and raise the capital and construct replacement facilities. And at the same time, it was, the county had reviewed its facility use plans, and during that time, we didn't have an immediate need for that property, so we were able to accommodate that request.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll just add, Commissioner, the unless terminated earlier language is very standard in almost all agreements dealing with a term, just because there's, you know, you always account for the, for the potential of a, of a default or something like that that has a specific process that then allows a termination, so that's very standard language.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Commissioner Vandermaal?
Just a comment. Commissioner Coleman asked me if I was around in 1965 when that agreement was made, but I wasn't.
But you were on board.
Just saying.
Right. Commissioner Bolkowski?
The consideration in the original lease in item four, and I agree with Commissioner Mast, that Arbor Circle is, is doing a lot of excellent work in our community. However, looking at number four, we're, we get $1 a year, which is this year's, or this meeting's theme. However, when it says they'll also provide to the people of Kent County services equal to the fair market value, is that just any service, or is that free service? And do we get a report on that from them, or do we, is it just something that was lost in time?
Again, I believe it was, when this lease was originally entered into, it was with the Grand Rapids Child Guidance Clinic.
Correct.
Okay, and so over time, we have a merger that becomes Arbor Circle.
Correct.
And we understand the mission of that nonprofit is to provide those services to our residents, so, I mean, we're basically putting in a provision that should your mission change and all of a sudden you become a different organization, it's a for-profit organization, you're not going to get this favored treatment from the county. All right? But to my knowledge, you know, we work with them on an annual basis to, to make sure that needs are met, but we don't get an accounting against fair market value in terms of, there's no appraisal done as to what fair market value of the property is, and there's no analysis then in terms of the value of the services that we provide.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? I see none. We'll call the question. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We then move to agenda item number eight, which is an action item by, for fiscal purposes.
This is a request to recommend to the Board to appropriate up to $5 million from the general fund transfers out to the CIP Fund Strategic Capital pursuant to the space needs study and through conducting a needs assessment of other existing facilities and infrastructure, that it is necessary to construct, renovate, and raise various structures owned by the county and to acquire and install related fixture, furniture, and equipment due to the magnitude... Due to the magnitude of the projects, the county intends to pay for part of the costs through the issuance of bonds supplemented with available cash to reduce the amount of the bond issue. The county has funds currently appropriated in the transfers out category in the general fund, which due to unplanned events, will not be expended as planned. The result is a one-time opportunity to reallocate these funds to partially defray the costs of infrastructure needs.
So moved. We have a motion by Commissioner Morgan. Is there support?
Support.
By Commissioner Coleman? Questions or comments? I see none, so we will call the question. All in favor indicate by say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number nine, which is an action request by the Human Resources Department.
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve a three-year labor agreement for the period January 1, 2016 through December 31, 2018 between the county and the Police Officers Labor Council Court Reporters. The negotiating committee recommends approval of a three-year labor contract with the POLC Court Reporters, which represents four employees. The wages will increase 2% annually in 2016, 2017, and 2018. In 2016, the employee share of healthcare premiums will increase seventeen and a half percent to 20%, and $250 single, $500 family deductibles will be added to the HMO plan. The additional $25 per day, per pay period healthcare contribution for employees whose spouses decline available health coverage by their employees will be deleted. In 2018, the out-of-pocket maximum under the county's healthcare plans will increase by $1,000 with a corresponding reduction of $1,000 in prescription out-of-pocket maximum to maintain compliance with limits set forth under PL 111 of 1-148. A new insured long-term disability program will replace the pension plan non-duty disability program in 2016. The employee pension plan contribution cap will increase from eight and a half percent to nine and a half percent of pay in 2017. Effective January 1, 2016, the current sick leave personal time provisions will be replaced with 72 hours of annual personal time and a sickness and accident insurance benefit of 67% of straight pay time. Employees' current sick leave banks will be frozen to be used for pension service credit, except that a supplement bank not to exceed 182 hours can be maintained to supplement the SNA plan. The total three-year increase to salary and benefit cost is $21,253. The requirement for employees to pay union dues will be deleted as required by state law. This item was recommended for approval by the Legislative and Human Resources Committee at its last meeting.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
By Commissioner Voorhees. Is there support?
Support.
By Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments? Commissioner Jones?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to comment that this is an impressive process that this contract goes through in order to get to this point, and we have a phenomenal staff that makes that happen, and I'm very appreciative that we're at this point and the process works.
Good, thank you. Good point. Commissioner Bukowski?
What is the long-term viability of this employee group in the sense of we have four court reporters and, like, our new courts are all computers and other recording devices? So are these four employees eventually going to retire and this group will disappear? Or are these four the ones tending the machines?
That's a great question. The intent has been that we move to the new JAV system, which is, or not new anymore, but the JAV system, which is the reporting, and, you know, the long-term plan is something along the lines of what you suggested. As they retire, we're not, you know, terminating any of the employees. As they retire, then they will be phased out.
And I do think the, some judges use that system, correct? The electronic system?
Most of it.
And so it probably is something that will transition over the long term, would be my guess.
And then, so hence there was no need for a two-tier wage system in this?
Correct.
Probably, yeah.
Okay.
Vice Chair Hennessy?
Does that tie into this one provision on the language change that job security language is delete and replaced with a letter of understanding?
Yes.
Does that ties into what you just explained?
We, there was a provision in the agreement that we negotiated with the bargaining unit that, that, I've got to refresh my memory, and I don't know if Stephanie or Bob can refresh my memory, but that has changed and as we anticipate these retirements.
Good morning.
Good morning. That was a big issue when we were at the negotiating table and something that it took us a little while to work through. There was a provision in the contract that specifically stated that due to technology, we could not replace those individuals, so what we did is we came up with a letter of understanding and basically a plan that as judges retired, what would happen to these individuals, and it basically allows three of those individuals to get to retirement.
Thank you, Stephanie. Any other questions? I see none, so we'll call the question. All in favor indicate by say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number 10, which is an action request by Parks Department.
This is a request to recommend to the board to purchase 170 acres from the estate of Robert E. Welton for $1.28 million plus closing costs estimated at $20,000 to expand the future Two Rivers Park and to appropriate an additional $140,000 to the acquisition project in the 2015 CIP Fund budget. A 2001 study identified southeast Kent County as having the greatest need for additional parkland due to rapid population growth and a lack of large parks. To partly address this need, in 2007, the county acquired 91 acres of unique land at the confluence of the Thorn Apple and Coldwater Rivers. The additional 140 acres will expand and diversify recreational opportunities available at the future park, and it is consistent with the Kent County Parks Trails and Natural Areas Master Plan. In 2014, the Parks Department submitted an application to the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Trust Fund for up to 70% of the purchase price of the property, and on May 14, 2015, the board approved a grant agreement for the project and appropriated $810,000 in funding from the DNR and $350,000 in other sources to the CIP Fund. Final appraisals on the project came in at $1.28 million, which was more than the estimates prepared for the grant submission. In order to address the shortfall, Caledonia Township has agreed to increase its contribution by $65,000, and the Kent County Parks Foundation has agreed to contribute an additional $10,000. The remaining $65,000 required for the match and closing costs will come from the Parks Acquisition and Development Project in the CIP Fund. The purchase agreement has been reviewed and approved as deformed by corporate council.
Okay, is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
By Commissioner Jones?
Support.
Is there support? By Vice Chair Hennessy? I think this is a great example of some great collaboration among our partners, both local governments, other local governments, and our nonprofit partners. With that, I'll open it up to any questions or comments. Commissioner Coleman?
So just so I'm clear, that fund balance will, after this, be at $33,000 until January 1, at which point it'll be refunded by an amount of which I don't recall the details.
No, there's no additional funding proposed in the Parks Acquisition and Development Fund.
Okay, so it'll be at $33,000 at this point?
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was wondering if Roger could give me a little background on this park. How long have you been working on this? And as I look at the map, which is great to have, is, does that eastern section or eastern boundary of the proposed acquisition, does that go right up to the Thorn Apple there? Am I looking at the map correctly, or is that, is that a river that goes through?
The western boundary.
Western, okay. Well, I'm an ambulance driver, you know, east.
East west. So the western boundary is the Thorn Apple, and in the very southeast corner of the property is a little bit of the Coldwater.
And how many acres are, would you think that are west of Whitneyville Avenue there?
Oh, there's, I think it's probably around 20, 25, and our goal is to put a canoe kayak launch on the Thorn Apple with a launching area there.
Wonderful. How long have you been working on this, Roger?
Um, let's see, it's 2015, probably, it's over 10 years total, because it started out with Two Rivers, the original purchase.
Great job. Yeah. Thank you, Roger, our director of parks. We may have some more questions for you, so stand by. Let's see, Commissioner Mast? Do you have your hand?
Well, I just wanted to clarify what Commissioner Coleman was asking. I took, when you have a Parks and, Parks Acquisition Development Fund balance, $173,611, that's the last figure in this whole paragraph, that that's what's left. But what he's pointing out is that the 140 that we're approving here gets taken away from that 173, so we only end up with 33, which is a different story, but I...
The 60, we've got, the additional 65 comes off of the 173, so then it's 108.
So we end up with a 108, okay.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? I see none.
That's a little better.
Thank you again, Roger. Excellent work on this. We'll call the question. All in favor indicate by say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number 11, which is another action request by the Parks Department.
This is a request to recommend to the board to approve an agreement with Peter Sekia for an additional $500,000 donation to the meadows at Millennium Park and to appropriate the $500,000 to that project in the 2015 Capital Improvement Program Fund. In August of 2015, the board approved an agreement with the Sekia Family Limited Partnership to finance improvements to the meadows area of Millennium Park through the issuance of private placement bonds in the principal amount of $3 million, which is forgiven pursuant to the terms of the agreement. Bids for the project exceeded the $3 million budget, and over the past several months, county staff has worked with the, to resolve the shortfall, including redesigning and rebidding certain elements, and additional county allocation of $200,000 was included as part of the 2016 CIP Fund budget for the project. In addition, in order to maintain the original scope of the project and consistency with the design standards of the park, Mr. Sekia has agreed to contribute an additional $500,000 to the project through a testamentary gift. The additional funding will ensure that the meadows of Millennium Park contains all the elements originally envisioned and provides a high-quality amenity with multiple uses and benefits for the community. The agreement has been reviewed and approved as deformed by corporate council.
Is there a motion to approve?
Support.
Commissioner Voorhees? And I have support by Commissioner Morgan, and I just would echo what Commissioner Vander Mullen stated earlier about a different motion where this really shows the essence of Kent County. I think this one, this motion does as well. $3.5 million of support from a, in private individual, Peter Sekia, just really outstanding, and we, you know, couldn't do some of these projects without support for that by people like Peter, so we are very grateful for that. Are there other questions or comments? Commissioner Voorhees?
Thank you, Chair Solfeld. I echo your statement of admiration for the cooperation that we get within our community and especially in the Millennium Park with Peter Sekia's involvement, and something that is taking place here that we kind of took a look at and try at some years ago, but thankful that it was, is being accomplished and then is additional. Just a point for my learning, a testamentary gift. Tell me a little bit more about that.
What the agreement is, is basically that when Peter passes on, that we'll receive a bequest equal to that amount.
Oh, okay.
But we have an agreement so that that's a stated intention that's irrevocable, just to protect the county because we're advancing funds with the construction now.
Commissioner Morgan?
So that's similar to the existing agreement we had in the first place with him, or is it different? Because I thought somehow it was different.
The first agreement we had with him, we actually had bonds, and his limited liability company purchased bonds so that we had an infusion of cash today, and then they were going to forgive repayment of those bonds. In this instance, we're not receiving the cash today. What we're getting is a promise of a gift from his estate.
So it's not...
So we're advancing the money to be able to construct today and that we would get repaid from that, from the estate.
So like the original gift or bonds, this could be used or a template for future donations or future gifts?
It's another creative way that the county and the Parks Department has come up with to finance benefits and improvements today for the benefit of the community and receive funding back at a future date.
And just a closing note, Mr. Chair, I'd like to echo Commissioner Voorhees's statements on the families and especially the Peter Sekia's, Peter Sekia's family for his work on Millennium Park. I do have one question for Mary. Mary, the over, the budget overruns, was that from excavation primarily, or what?
I'm actually going to let Roger...
Okay, Roger.
... answer that because he gets into that.
Welcome back to the podium, Roger. Yeah, I just, I need to know, Raj.
It really was the bidding climate. Had we bid this a year ago, we probably wouldn't have had the overruns. The bidding climate changed completely in the spring of this year.
Just that quickly.
Mm-hmm.
I guess that's kind of good news and bad news.
Mm-hmm.
It's that darn private sector again.
Yeah, well, I love it. God love it.
Yeah, other GR parks had the very same issue.
Yeah, so the point is it was not unique in any way.
No, not. Everybody's having the same issue.
Thanks, Raj.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? I see none, so we will call the question. All in favor indicate by say nine.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We then move to miscellaneous, item 12 of the agenda. Is there any commissioner miscellaneous today? Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just the airport connections are out. Feel free to read it. I won't quiz any commissioner on it, but there's some good articles in there.
No quiz?
No quiz.
Good. Any other miscellaneous today? Okay, I see none. Our next meeting will be on December 15 at 8:30 a.m. We are adjourned at 9:33 a.m.[1660.13]
I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are 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 Kent County.
I'm Kent County.
Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.[1785.83][1785.83][music]